The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where my name is ungodly, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for allowing this council to gather here today. I want to thank you for the citizens represented at this table. We ask that you please be with us as we go through the business of this town. And everyone take the appropriate precautions in this dangerous time. Please, thank we ask you not now.
Call meeting going on now by roll call.
Vice Mayor Fox, here. Councilman Diggs.
Here.
Councilman Van Crease.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Propp.
Here.
Well, we missed a meeting, but we're just spread out here. I reckon we meet all the requirements. So we'll do the best we can do, and that's all we can do. Right now, I need approval of the minutes for March. Everybody read them? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, just down the rows red. Line item number six is the police report. Anybody got any questions for the chief?
Things haven't picked up too much during this pandemic. Just some fails and a few more domestics. Lot more calls down with the twin troopers that are getting aggravated evidently. Had several gun calls down there, truck stopping, pointing guns on each other.
I've been having people talking about how people speeding, especially on Main Street.
I agree.
I mean, I'm talking about 45 plus passing on Main Street and everything. Of course, I know you can't be there all the time. But it's mainly on the weekends, during the day, Saturdays and Sundays. I don't know who's working, but they do start to troll us home. They start to stop us because over 45.
Too fast.
Is way too fast. People walking up down Main Street like crazy. It's a matter of time. And there are certain driveways down through there, and you know, if you try to pull out the little heels, you can't see somebody. And actually, it may be in everybody else's neighborhoods too. I don't know. I can only speak for Main Street.
Yeah, they get excited coming downhill. I said, they get excited coming downhill.
Well, and it's not going with people. It's not.
It's getting worse.
It's mainly people going through. Like on the weekends, carrying their cigs, they're coming from their neighborhood. It's not the people that live here. It's people that don't live here now. That would suck.
That's even also that gets sticky. It's gonna make it a lot easier.
Oh, I know. I know. But I just, you know, I thought, I just mean, there's been two or three, you know, down through there that said something to me about it. I said, yeah, I can say something.
Shannon gave me a memo over here. Y'all all got it there. She's answering a question for the town that still be COVID-19 pandemic. Benedict has shut down the city due to the county's health and crew. Police department either gets compensated with comp time or with payment for that time that other city employees have paid up to 40 hours for only working two to three days a week. Said the police department did not have a choice whether to work or stay at home or with pay. All officers have come to work without argument and did not want to be compensated and treated fair for their dedication during this pandemic. Now, what we did, and I did it, we had an executive order from the governor. And there were essential and non-essential work. And basically, so the barriers, and the deal was to not to let these people to be together. So in here, we staggered, I staggered, Emmens Station. And did the same thing over at the sewer plant. And our boys had to work to pick the garbage up. Had to be, and there was times that all three of them were in a truck. Not much. There was just two or three little stops there that they, they three. And they, the object of the deal, according to the order, was to keep them as we are here tonight, six feet apart. And this is all new to me. And I did what, uh, they were on call, and they did, they did, they staggered out, and they took off, and we, our maintenance boys, they picked up all the garbage, kept everything, and just like we always did, they picked up paper, they mowed it all the morning, and there, and I kept them apart, and no, we didn't let them go back down there and go together. So we said, I said, I'm home. I was several days, probably about three weeks, I guess, the major thing went on. Now, on this here, I want, this year, I want to turn this over to our attorney, and I called him about it, I mean, this year, and see what he's, and think what the law is.
And the buyer's correct. It's not new to him, it's new to all of us. Nobody, nobody walking earth has gone through what we're going through presently. But I honestly need to look a little further at what options the council might have to consider. I have some audit concerns if you issue payment for time that wasn't worth, but there may be some, some alternatives for the council to consider for the officers if it so chooses. But the executive orders, other guidance is changing every day. You see something different every day. So this is something that the council could likely address, but we need a little more time to figure out what the particular options are. I don't think, I don't think you're going to be in a position to issue any kind of payment because you're going to get an audit issue from, from that, because it would be time that they haven't, if it's, if they've worked overtime, they'll get paid for overtime. That's, that's it. But I don't think that's the concern necessarily. It's not hours for which they've worked to not be paid. It's, it's some other issues that have been raised. So we'll at least by next council meeting, try and have some options for the council to consider. And that's, that's kind of the best we can do right now. I think everybody's back on, on regular schedule, but I'd be wrong just to tell you, you could or couldn't do something without knowing for sure. And the one thing I don't think you can do is, is make a payment, but there may be some other alternatives to.
Might be some comp. Which realistically, Michael, comp time is cheaper than.
As long as there's no calls overtime when somebody uses.
Right. And if we had the full two part times, part time's cheaper than full time. So, you know, I'm.
And again, I want to make sure we can, we can do that without any issue out of council.
And comp time be fine.
And you can. And the council's able to put any kind of restrictions on that as far as when it's going to be used up and that type of thing, so it doesn't carry over for an extended period of time if we're, if we're allowed to do it. But we'll have some more information in fairness to the, to the officers who, but I'm sure never missed a day. Nor did the other employees ask to miss a day. It was just the way, the way things had to be. Mayor's right, the executive orders pretty clear that you had to limit that as much as you possibly could. And it left so much into the local discretion to handle it the best way that you could. And that's kind of where we are. But I'll have some more information as soon as we get it. But the mayor called, I think he got this this afternoon, middle of afternoon, I looked since then, so.
It's all new, new waters. I've never charged any water like this, and so I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but there's also said we had, I'm not going to, not, when the governor gives me an executive order, I'm going to do it the best that I can. And I tried to, even the other day, I stayed here every day, was in and out, and when I left, even I, I still stuck around. It, and there was, there was times it all was others. Some of they, they come in, they did mowing, there were some days they stayed over and mowed, and then there were some days, I mean, it wasn't all give you, they, they, and the sewer was same way. We had a, we've had a lot breaking down in the sewer for the last two months. Boy, it's been mad. I'll go a little over you a little bit later. Anything else for the chief? Our next line item is fire. You got anything for them?
Yes, a couple things. I have taken over the fire reports. If there's anything else that I would like to see on anything, just to put ahead. If y'all like questions, I do have the hard talk. It was brought to my attention, and that I had a line item in my budget. That was pretty substantial. I was kind of looking at getting a compressor to fill our air bottles. It is kind of pricey. I was kind of wanting to talk to y'all about it. Right now, I don't see it as a good time to maybe rolling that over for next year and see where we go from there. It is about $37,000 expense. This is what we applied for last year on A F P that we did not get. What I'm understanding it, that was a new project, and they are not approving it. So just bear that in mind. I don't, I'm kind of wanting to get. It is a need. Joe's went down, which is cartridge city, which we used, went down in March, so I did have to use the counties. The way I take it, his trailer that has a fill station in it will not fill out bottles anymore because we did go to 4,500 psi bottles. So I think it's kind of a good one. I know y'all kind of want to get away from county, but the county has to go cartridge to get air. I don't think that's wrong.
Could there be anything that you could reapply with that on again, you think, or?
Right now, it's new projects. Everything I read this year was turned up in here, our passengers who bargained received brush trucks, and we all have one to replace. Now it's COVID-19 stuff, it's masking, stuff like that.
Right.
I've kind of got it down, and I didn't reapply because we were so far behind on reports, but I didn't want to have to deal with that one.
You've been with the county now?
Uh, yes. I've been using theirs.
What kind of life expectancy's round about, or do you have a clue?
I'm not real sure. It's mainly filters. Filters is a problem.
When those bottles go out of date, there were so many years, don't they? What's the possibility of them changing? I know I'm asking you some broad questions, but.
Right now, every five years, they have to be hydrostatic. So that'll be coming up. Should be two years, we should be ready to hydrostat first time. If we get a compressor fill station for bottle cascade, you're looking five years on them too. So 25 year lifespan on them, I believe. I think that was about $4,000, other was the cascade system.
Have we just bought some of them?
We bought airbags, we had enough bottle cascade.
Have we got a grant for that?
Yes, sir.
Other than the building, we've not really spent any money. Have we? Mostly been grant money.
From the fire department? Yes, sir. That's all I need.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Line item eight is your financial statement. Any questions on financial statements? General fund, insurance, account, we're in good shape and.
We don't want to try to pay that loan off before.
That's something that we'll probably discuss during, if y'all want to have a workshop or whatever, to see how, how we want to proceed with that. We're still completely doing, maybe we'll go by rounds or something. If we can, that'll save quite a bit of interest on one of those loans. I had worked up, that's been several months ago, I'll give some more accurate figures to see where we would stay and what we would save. It'll be, when I first figured, I think it would save us like a hundred and fifty some thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
We're working with something here we never worked with before. And like for the sewer. We have lost some of our best customers for this pandemic. School, three months, one of the best customers we've got. Timber office shut down, walkout shut down, K L C bathroom, McDonald's. McDonald's one of our good customers. Losinos, Mexican restaurant, Drayers, Lexington, they've all been closed. So instead of getting their regular sewer bills, they going to get probably a minimum set sewer bill, which will be 25, 30 bucks. Exxon, Shell, and Key Stop, and Truck Stop, will probably be about the same when this pilot. Factories, we don't know yet, see if we've got some factories that shut down. And we have not, there's these cities start coming in. Number one, we don't know what it's going to do to our local option. And number two, we don't know what it's going to do to this sewer again. I know they're going to be short, I know that. And on both of them, and I'm expecting heavy.
Is there any kind of federal assistance on that for as a town could maybe?
None that I know of. I haven't, no, I haven't heard anything.
I think everything out there is mostly for the businesses instead of, instead of.
Nothing they've seen us yet.
Yes, sir.
It's, it, that's, we're just going to have to wait a month to see what happens. We were working on budgets there, they had budgets there, and I looked at our local option. We cut it what we anticipated. Of course, when you're doing a budget, it's all guesswork anyways, because you don't have an idea what's coming in.
Yeah, there's a very good possibility there'll be budget revisions the next year, depending on what all. You're probably not really seeing the actual numbers much.
Not bad yet, but it's probably within the next two months.
You'll see, local option, we got, that we get this month was paid in April, collected in March. So it's going to start, it's collected one month, I mean, they collected next month, the state collects it the next month, and then we get it the next one. We're actually two months behind on what we get.
June will actually be March is.
Yes. You'll see March.
They think that quarter before we really see.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And see the same way on these sewer bills. The way we, we, I mean, I'm really, really, I'm really dreading this because they are, they are rained, especially these factories. And like I said, McDonald's and Timber office and the school, I mean, we've lost three months there on the school, but there's nothing, it'll be nothing. But that's just part of it.
Even if things go back to some sort of normal, you're still looking at middle of next year, still seeing, seeing it come through in the state shares too.
But also with us, we're collecting, we're not sending that part of the money to the school. We're collecting that now, so we may not, and we, of course, we don't know how much we want to receive or not get from the coronavirus, but we are still, we're getting, how much money are we getting extra each month? Do you know that yet?
I don't.
On what? The money, the three quarters of 1% that the county's not capturing.
It's not really that much.
I'd say a couple thousand, maybe 20 thousand.
Maybe, maybe less than 10, no, it's a whole lot less than 10, less than 5. Less than 5, but, no, it.
But that doesn't impact our sewer funds.
No, 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 the sewer's only sold, it's only sold, but the local option is, like I said, they just sort of, they're going, they're going to run together because it's the same place as, of course, the schools are generating tax, but I mean, those businesses do it. Just wait and see.
And we can't offset like the sewer loss with general fund, can we?
No.
It has to be self-supporting.
It's an enterprise fund, and it's, frankly, it's, that was the reason we got into the sewer business. We had been here 20 years, and we started with 100 customers, we had 110, and the plant was 20 years old, and wages had gone up and everything. And in 2011, we had to raise rates, and then we had to raise rates again, and we didn't start doing this sewer deal until 2016. We had to raise rates again after 2016 till we got these customers here. And that's, that's where they recommended that we put them, that we put them in these subdivisions where that we pick up and to run our lines on elsewhere that other people out further could hook on to. And that was advice from, from the federal government. That wasn't my brainstorm. And it, it had to do something, I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't take, pick up 10 customers in 20 years and make up the difference without raising. And it, it was just, it was forced. And so now, we are, have picked up, how many customers we got now? Somewhere in the neighborhood of 300?
Twenty-two and three, yeah.
Yeah. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 300, and whereas we only had 100, 110.
How many potential availability do we have that more could tile? Do you know a number on that model that's available to you?
I don't.
You know?
I'd say we, the new lines we put in, probably 25, 30% has, has hooked on. Of course, the other one, and that's where the complaint comes in, that they had to pay the $27. But as federal money and the federal government said, that if you went by the house and everywhere there was a water tap, they paid $27 if they didn't hook on. But we are gradually picking up there. We're, we're probably hooked up, what, the last month, two or three?
Three, I think.
It's, it's a slow process. They'll make it because, man, it's, it's a lot gassed over by, if they have propane, they'd wait till it burned the propane out.
What do we collect on sewer month?
It's in your budget there. I don't, I don't, I can't tell you right to.
I can remember what we got in there.
It's in your budget there, what they collect, this book. Anything on financial statements? Anything else, any questions? Line item number nine, see the quarters before. Make your thinking.
We, of course, we have missed several meetings that we need to reschedule, and also need to see if y'all want to have a budget workshop sometime, somewhere, however. We'll start with that one. You just, you guys just tell me when. The earliest, I have to advertise, the earliest we could possibly have it is on the 23rd with proper advertising, so whatever works best for everybody.
It's fine. Got on mine?
It's the 30th, last month. I mean, Wednesday, sorry. Got a problem, sir? The 20th, the earliest we could have that's the Wednesday. We'll come out of the paper that day.
What day did you say?
The earliest would be the 20th on a Wednesday, and then we, we come out of the paper that date. Of course, 25th is Memorial Day, we'll be closed. 21st is Planning Commission Six.
What area else?
We've got second reading, if everything goes well, it'll be on June 8th, so anytime between now and then. That was good for everybody.
I'm wide open, so just tell me when.
Anybody have any preferences for days or anybody else? Okay. Tuesday, 26th? That's what I was thinking. All right. Tuesday, the 26th, that 5, 6?
6. That's a real bad.
You're doing that instead of the May 20th round?
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
And that's the workshop?
Yes. The other one, the next one is the personnel committee that we were supposed to have, I believe, in March, I believe. You guys, we just. You guys, we just, I just think that y'all want to do this.
Can we do that the same night?
Uh, we can. You want to do it at five or after?
I'm, I'm good, whatever. Anybody, Michael, one of y'all might have a different schedule. I'm good, whatever.
Personnel committee will meet on 5/26, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day at 5:00 PM before the budget workshop. And we also missed our quarterly audit to meet. Which, I know that's, that's not everybody, so you guys.
I think six AM, whatever.
I thought it's like we can't have it during the day, it's, it's. Yeah, we're not after the budget. Sure, that's going to be a long one, we can do that. All right, Audit Committee, 5/26 at seven, so you're going to personnel five, budget workshop at six, audit at seven.
Once you do the audit at six and then do the budget at seven, because that audit won't last, you can just pick up and go, that audit won't last five minutes.
Do the, do the Audit Committee at six and then start the workshop at 6:15.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've done a mess today, so my script.
All right. We are currently waiving penalties for sewer bills and such. You guys have any thoughts on how long we will keep doing that?
You mean people that's not, that's not paying the $27?
No, they're, they're just paying the minimum, and we're not charging anything as far as penalties and all that stuff. And we just kind of need to know how long you, we want to keep on doing this, or I believe we've been waiving all property taxes too that didn't come in, so. Which I believe it was one of the executive orders not to charge the, the penalties on the sewer on the utility bills, so I haven't seen anything come through lifting that, I don't know that it's up to us or y'all.
We'll come do it at 15, I don't see any reason we couldn't extend it a little while longer until we did find out.
I mean, there's still places not open yet.
Yeah.
And probably won't be open until June at least.
Just want to let that one simmer in for a little while. You can put it on your agenda for June 8th, probably, I think that all the executive orders that I know are inspired. Okay? Not anybody issue yet? Uh, the last thing that I have is we've got our annual report from the Actuary for our retirement, and what they do is they examine our retirement plan, who's retired, all that stuff over the years, and they give us a rate, what they recommend to keep us current and vested in it properly, and it stays the same at 7.38, they didn't change it the same time it's always been, so. I just need a motion for someone to approve that, so I have to send it in the state on May 29.
And health insurance, you can go up this year?
Have no, no increase in health, health insurance premiums, like I said, this one stays the same, it didn't go up.
I'll make that motion, please, sir.
One second.
Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Tries?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right, new business, we've got B&amp;B fireworks and Surefire fireworks, we do them together?
Uh, we can, I think, because we're the same thing, we've already approved one Surefire, then we got another one, uh, this one.
Exxon.
Is an Exxon, and the other one's a car wash. And.
That's car wash.
It's not a car wash.
All the side.
Between, and physical therapy, I guess.
Okay.
Where is every year?
Yeah. Of course, now you've got new businesses there. It's up to somebody, they just applied for it there, need a motion to approve these?
I have the app, so if y'all want to look on everything appears to me.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, Michael, roll call on money.
Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Tries?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number 20-0511-2, requiring use of portable toilets for the construction sites in town or ward. Whereas the town of Wardville currently has a force ordinance of resolution governing town, and whereas the town of Wardville has seen and believes continued commercial residential development, health, safety, sanitation, welfare of all its citizens, and for the laborers coming work to town, it's necessary to ensure the presence of restroom facilities here in construction town. Whereas current OSHA standards also provide for the presence of portable toilets in construction sites and therefore be ordained to the board of all women in the town of Wardville as follows, the portable toilets as a sufficient number is required by OSHA standards and required for all new residential, commercial construction, for any accessory structure construction where access is on-site facility, not available for any remodeling work that will take longer than 90 days, the existing restroom facilities are being remodeled or in the. All portable toilets may be located close to but shall not be adjacent to the street and shall be present on-site until time of the operation and the accessible toilets are available on-site. A violation of this order shows up, possibly there's a rep, verification of the building permit issued, and other penalties provided by law for violation of any ordinance town or ward. In portable toilet location under construction site with the building permit expired, certificate of occupancy completed, it shall be issued to be removed within 48 hours. Ordinance shall take effective immediately upon the final passage to the public wire file. Any questions?
What did you say about remodeling? Was it required if, if it was just remodeling?
If there's, if the, if the bathrooms are not available inside the house.
Okay.
It's going to take longer than 90 days for the remodel. Which we don't get a permit for remodeling. Commercial, we didn't create. Yeah, that's right. And council members, this was, we discussed this a couple of months back, and this was something that I took just from what I found, limited research, or no magic to it, so to speak, but this seemed to be what the council at that time was the most interested in, if there's any changes, you certainly had them tonight.
And our building inspector would be, our building inspector would be checking on this, that'd be his job.
It'd be his job, just like anything else, yes, sir. The OSHA standards right now, most of, I can't imagine there being much over unless it's a large site in industrial park, but it's one facility or one toilet for every 20 employees, after that, you have to have one for every additional 40. So for the most part, I would think the majority of your construction sites would just require the one, unless it was, like I say, some large industrial project or something, that shouldn't be issued. And it's only required, I, I think these are, most of the time, if you don't own your own, you rent them monthly, and to help your contractors, once, once there's facilities available on the side, if you're building a house and the restroom's functioning, then you can remove it, just as long as they have access at that time.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Charlie, please make the motion in a second.
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Tries?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
Okay, this is the book. We definitely need to do this, we need to do this with the Resolution 20-0511, Resolution to apply for the Governor's Local Government Support Grant, whereas the state of Tennessee through the Department of Finance Administration has announced Governor's Local Government Support Grants for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Whereas said direct appropriation fund grants are one-time funded to be used on one-time expenses involving hardware upgrades, capital maintenance, utility system upgrades, road projects, public safety, COVID-19 response, and the town of Wardville has need for the utility system upgrades and has administered a $57,277 grant. Been approved to adopt as legislative body of the town of Wardville, Smith County, Tennessee as follows, town of Wardville shall make application for any approved, take receipt of the Governor's Local Government Support Grant and extend said funds on the approved category set forth in the application as a direct appropriation grant for one-time expenses. It's, the mayor and city recorder have given all authority and direction to make application to claim allotted grant funds of $57,277, and I want to put that in the sewer plant. Because in the last two months, we have replaced one pump on 53, one pump on 264, two backflow valves on 264, one test pump inside the building, and that old box down it, that golden hurry, now on 53. I, I got caught with that, we, we did a grant on that when I first came in, and I didn't know, I should have replaced it when I had a grant, but our funds were so scarce at that time, and they said, of course, it's lasted 10 years, but that old box down there, these boys tell me they haven't come back, and it's, it's, it's absolutely, it's just water got over it in the flood of 2010. And that's how we got the grant to do it and the payment, that's where our payment grant come in, they come in all together. And we had enough money, but we wanted, we say we were out $205,000, our part on that back then, and our money was so scarce in that sewer, sewer plant then, that we did, they replaced those, those two pumps, and we spent quite a bit on that and raised it up, raised that box up, there's so many differences by the pumps. But that box was where that water got up over that electronic box, and fuel opened that thing up, it's sort of like looking at New York City. And there's a lot of money that needs to, and we need every bit of this because those pumps that we're rebuilding, uh, they're about $8,000, $8,500 space, we already got two of them, there's two backflow where that holds that pressure off that high-pressure line, those down on 264, both of those went bad, they were coming back in, and we were pumping, and we got a light bill, electric bill, that out for $17,000, and it usually runs, what, about three? What we're doing, we're just pumping it over, we pumped it up, we got up, and they turned around, this is running right back in, and we were pumping it over and over again. And that, that old, that old building, oh, by now, it's, it was built in the early 90s, and there's a lot of things that need to be spent over there, and there's no need to put any payment, we, you see what our fund balance is on a general, and we don't, we had a, all right. Road money, I mean, I mean, gas tax money, I mean, we, we've got plenty of money on them, and I really, we really need to put, I want to put in that, every bit of this sewer plant.
We're not going to try to upgrade the drying bed like we initially talked about?
Yes, yes, we're going, we're going to look at that.
What type of?
Well, we just.
Have you got any instruments, ideas on how much that might be?
It was around 50-ish a couple of years ago when we looked into it, now, of course, things have changed since then, so I, you know.
I don't think that drying bed is going to be that much now. Uh, we, we looked at some of the other dates, thought maybe they would be about 30, 35, and then it'll take every bit of the rest up, plus some of ours to, to cover all of this, because like I said, we, uh, we, we've already got, we've already had to work, we've got, as a matter of fact, we still got one pump up there. And we, we built two pumps now, and like I said, that, that backflow kitchen, both of those were bad down there. It's coming off that high-pressure line, and, and we're, we're in dire need of, that's, when it first come out to 27, and when it come out to 57, I mean, it would be, it really helped.
I'd just hate to stick it in the fire without a knife.
I'll have it for you, I, I will, I will find out on that drying bed, we, we looked at that and talked about that other day, I think he said about 35, John.
I'd just hate to continue to move a little forward on it, because other stuff, I mean, I know it's unexpected, but.
Well, we've already spent it, I mean, and, and Wasscon said that they would wait on us until we got the money on this, and, and we're going to start another year, and this thing is getting old, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of expenses. If you want something other than money, I'd get you a sewer plant. I mean, big time, big time.
Education board will probably likely have to have the detail of what you're, what you plan to do, anyway, so you'd have to have those numbers to even make that education.
I'll make a motion to pass this Resolution 20-0511. You second? Okay, Barbara made the motion. Jessica second. Need a roll call?
Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Tries?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
Annual Audit Report, they're right here, are you ready to leave?
Yeah, just, just need to formally approve the audit that was made, just form out of it.
Any other questions?
Does anybody get a copy of it, of audit balance?
Do you have any question?
Uh, something I do not want to let fall is tornado sirens, which I know the last two months have been crazy, as far as us not being here, I don't know what the process needs to be to, to move forward with that, I know I've got, reached out to some people and, and they've done a little bit of work, and they're pretty expensive, and one probably won't cover the territory that we've got here, so it's just something in your mind, you know, if there's, I don't know if there's any grants, I mean, like I say, the last month or two's been rough, so.
I, I heard that there were.
So I just don't want to drop the ball, even if we can get a little money on that.
I had called, uh.
Talking with some FEMA stuff?
Yeah, I had talked to Joe Proff, and he told me to call Sonny Carter, because they're probably happy to do a FEMA FEMA stuff, so we can reach out to him and see if he knows anything.
We've had, what, three, two in the last two months, so, and I'm getting a lot of, getting a lot of feedback on that.
Anything else?
Sewer project with the park, before we add on here.
We're not ready to get it. I think it's all, all of a sudden, he liked a couple more weeks, but he looked at the other thing, I see him, so. Any day?
You'd probably need a motion to accept that audit, just accept that they received it, so I can make it again. I think you got it.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make that one.
To accept audit, do you say?
Second that motion. Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Tries?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn, oh, anyway.
First reason, please.
Oh, we still haven't done it? I thought I was.
I feel about 73 today.
Okay.
I put a notice to the council, so to speak, on the front, to kind of explain what changes from last year are expected to occur. Of course, we have decreased state sharing revenues, the ones that I know are going to be low. The insurance workers' comp liability and property, uh, workers' comp was down 6.7 liability, the law enforcement, the general was down 20%, law enforcement was up eight and a half, errors and omissions policy was up five, auto liability was up six, and auto damage was down six, and property increased by 15%, all averages out to an increase of 1.8%. The CrossFit Shield Health Insurance Series don't frequently increase for 2020, I had period had a 50 cent raise.
on premium increase for two thousand and twenty. I figured in a fifty cent raise as a starting point. Um, I have put in four thousand dollars for Mr. Holger to go to replace Academy, uh, and I also figured in fifty-seven thousand dollars for the resolution we just done for the money that we got related. And on the back page, you'll see the beginning fund balance of that as well. So this is just a, just a starting point for the first reading. And I thank you, I have all the, all the funds, the budget, what we spent today, estimating what we think we're gonna do through the end of June, and the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one on the end.
Oh, we need a motion to approve that for fifth year twenty twenty-one, and for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. First reading? Jessica makes the motion, need a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Fox makes a second, need a roll call?
Vice Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Biggs?
Yes.
Councilman Van Treese?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Proff?
Yes.
Your business, old business, isn't it?
Motion adjourned.
Got a motion adjourned, need a second?
I'll say.
All right, next, next, all papers out?